Looks like we have everyone that's gonna be here anyway, so. All right, I will call to order the common council meeting on September fourteenth at seven thirty-one. First up is Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The flag. To the Republic, Georgia State, one nation, under God, indivisible, in every being, justice for all.
Roll call, please, Tracy.
Alder Allen?
Present.
Alder Aratafrata?
Here.
Alder Gerhardt?
Here.
Alder Hurt?
Here.
Alder Maldanato?
He's gone with excuse.
Absent with excuse, thank you. Mayor Richardson?
Here.
Alder Strassman? Here. Alder Udell?
Present.
Alder Wheeler?
Here.
You have a quorum, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Next up is public appearances, non-agenda items, new appointments, proclamations. We've got a couple of proclamations. First one is recognizing September fifteenth through October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one as Hispanic Heritage Month. And I will read a paragraph and then Julia will actually read it in Spanish. And we've done this in the past and. Oh. Need your glasses, one second. All right. Yeah. Whereas each year, the United States recognizes National Hispanic Heritage Month from September fifteenth through October fifteenth to celebrate the history, traditions, and the economic, cultural, and social contributions that Hispanic citizens have brought to our nation.
Cada año, los Estados Unidos de América reconocen desde el quince de septiembre hasta el quince de octubre como el mes de la herencia hispana para celebrar la historia, tradiciones, y la contribución económica, social, y cultural que la comunidad y ciudadanos hispanos han aportado y aportan a nuestra nación, y.
Whereas, the story of Hispanics and Latinos is the story of America in that they have contributed in various fields, from the arts, sciences, sports, and culture to the academy, have encompassed the American dream, have brought the energy and drive of recent immigrants to this country, and.
Además, la historia de los hispanos y latinos es parte de la historia de los Estados Unidos por su contribución en varios campos, desde las artes, las ciencias, los deportes, la cultura, y hasta la economía, logrando el sueño americano, y.
Whereas Latinos serve in government in every level, from school boards to the state house, from city councils and mayoral offices to Congress.
Además, los latinos participan políticamente en el gobierno en todos los niveles, desde las juntas escolares hasta la gobernación, desde los ayuntamientos y las alcaldías hasta el congreso, y.
Whereas, this month represents the anniversary of independence for Chile, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Mexico, and Nicaragua.
Además, que en este mes se celebra el aniversario de la independencia de Chile, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, México, and Nicaragua, y.
Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is one of enormous pride for over sixty-two million Hispanics Latinos living in the United States, comprising eighteen point one percent of the population, with a growth of twenty-three percent from two thousand and ten, according to the two thousand and twenty census.
Además, el mes de la herencia hispana representa un enorme orgullo para más de sesenta y dos millones de hispanos, latinos, que viven en los Estados Unidos de acuerdo con el censo del dos mil veinte, y con un crecimiento del veintitrés por ciento desde el dos mil diez, y que representan el dieciocho punto uno por ciento de la población, y.
Whereas, the U.S. Census Bureau estimates that by two thousand and sixty, Latino people will compromise over twenty-eight percent of the total U.S. population, with one hundred and nineteen million residing in the United States.
Además, la oficina del censo de los Estados Unidos estima que para el año dos mil sesenta las personas latinas representarán más del veintiocho por ciento de la población total de los Estados Unidos, con ciento diecinueve millones que residirán en los Estados Unidos, y.
Whereas Latinos are the fastest-growing constituency in Wisconsin, with more than four hundred and thirteen thousand Latinos calling Wisconsin home.
Además, los latinos son el electorado de crecimiento más rápido en Wisconsin, con más de cuatrocientos tres, trece mil latinos que consideran Wisconsin su estado y su casa, y representan un siete punto uno por ciento de la población de Wisconsin, y.
Whereas, Fitchburg is fortunate to count among its population a dynamic Hispanic-Latino community, seventeen point three percent of its population, that plays an important role in our city's economy and society.
Además, la ciudad de Fitchburg es pionera de contar con una población hispana dinámica que representa un siete punto tres por ciento de la población, y que aporta un rol importante en la economía y la sociedad de nuestra ciudad, y.
Whereas, we encourage all residents of Fitchburg to recognize and applaud the many contributions made by our Hispanic-Latino community to enhance the quality of life in our city.
Además, la ciudad de Fitchburg reconoce y celebra las numerosas contribuciones aportadas por nuestra comunidad hispana para mejorar la calidad de vida en nuestra ciudad, y.
Now therefore be resolved that the mayor and common council will recognize September fifteen through October fifteen, two thousand and twenty-one, as Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Fitchburg.
Por lo tanto, se decreta que el alcalde y el consilio de concejales reconocen el mes de quince de septiembre hasta el quince de octubre del dos mil veintiuno como el mes de la herencia hispana en la ciudad de Fitchburg, Wisconsin.
Be it further resolved that the mayor and common council congratulate our Hispanic-Latino community on this significant month and thank them for their contributions to the vibrancy of the city of Fitchburg and greater Madison.
Por último, se resuelve que el alcalde y el consilio de concejales felicitan y reconocen a nuestra comunidad hispana en este mes tan significativo y le agradece por su gran contribución a la ciudad de Fitchburg y los suburbios de Madison.
All right, thank you. I know that we've got Lupita online. I don't know if you'd like to say something or not. You're welcome to, you don't have to, but I'll at least give you that opportunity.
Absolutely, thank you for the opportunity and good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for the city of Fitchburg and Mayor Richardson and common council for making a tradition to have a proclamation of the Hispanic Heritage Month during September fifteen and October fifteen. Thank you for recognizing the achievements and contribution that Latinos does to the city of Fitchburg and as well as Dane County in Wisconsin. We appreciate that you guys take the time to recognize him, but as well, I appreciate that collaboration that we have done as. I mean, behalf of La Movida Radio and my husband, I'd like to thank you for making this possible and for collaborating with us in past years. And as well, I'd like to extend an invitation again as well this year for our two upcoming events that we also do on behalf of celebrating and recognizing the Hispanic Heritage Month. And so the first event is gonna be this coming Sunday, the Viva Mexico Festival. It's gonna be happening at the Bree Stevens Field at two o'clock, so I would like to extend the invitation to all of you. We will have the car caravan dealing by the, I think, thank you to future police department and fire department for participating. And that will start at noon from the Village Mall on Parker Street. And then the official event and ceremony will start at two P.M. at the Bree Stevens Field on Sunday, the nineteenth. But also I'd like to extend the invitation for the traditional Hispanic Heritage Month luncheon that we host every year. This is the eleventh annual celebration, and that's gonna happen in on October thirteenth at Monona Terrace. And we will be more than happy to having you all joining us for that closing the whole month of the celebration, the Hispanic Heritage Month. So I'd like to thank you again for inviting me tonight. I miss you. I usually go there in person and receive that recognition, but I appreciate as well Alder Aratafrata for making this happening and as well Mayor Richardson, thank you for that. And thank you again for recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month at the city council.
Gracias. Julia, you wanna say anything?
Yeah, so thank you Lupita for your words. And also I want to let you know that Lupita is one of the co-hosts of the TV show that we produce every month to for the Latino community called Reconociendo Contiguos Recursos en Español. Y es una produc-, this is a production between, a partnership between the city of Fitchburg and we work with Lupita and La Movida Radio Station. So thank you Lupita because you have been a volunteer of this show for, I don't know, a couple of years, so. We continue doing this, we do, we tape it like on Fridays once a month now. And we continue, you know, informing the Latino community in Fitchburg of all the activity that are happening in the city. So and also I want to say something in Spanish to the Latino community. Todos los que nos están viendo, queremos felicitarlos por toda su contribución y su aporte a la comunidad de Fitchburg. Es un orgullo de tener esta representación de casi cuatro mil latinos viviendo en la ciudad de Fitchburg. Así que son todos bienvenidos y seguimos adelante, gracias.
All right, thank you. All right, next we are recognizing September twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one as Human Resource Professional Day. Whereas, the Human Resources Department is instrumental in recruiting, selecting, resourcing, and retaining quality staff in support of providing excellent services for all residents and visitors to our city. And whereas, human resources plays a key role in fostering satisfaction and loyalty among employees by keeping employees informed about policies, working conditions, compensation, and benefits. And whereas, human resources monitors and manages current and future workforce trends, organizational cultural, culture, and ethical and social responsibility, among other things. And whereas, working human resources demands someone who is approachable, has integrity, and possesses interpersonal skills so effective working relationships can be formed with people at all levels. And whereas, human resources is valued and respected department that sustains the city's most important asset, its people. And whereas, the city is fortunate to have two employees in the Human Resources Department who work hard each day to make sure departments are staffed with high-quality employees and that those employees have a good work environment. Now therefore, I, Aaron Richardson, mayor of the city of Fitchburg, along with members of the Fitchburg Common Council, to hereby recognize September twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one as Human Resource Professional Day in the city of Fitchburg. Give thanks to Amy Tracy and Sarah Olson for their hard work and dedication, and encourage others to also express their appreciation. We'll claim this fourteenth day of September, two thousand and twenty-one. And I see Sarah is online. Sarah, would you like to say something? Thank you for everything you do for our residents and our employees.
Absolutely, thank you very much, Mayor and council members, for recognizing H.R. Professional Day, September twenty-sixth. Amy Tracy wasn't able to be here tonight, but I really wanted to take a moment to thank her for all of her dedication. She's been with us for nine years now, and the amount of lives that she's touched is just unbelievable. She runs the bulk of our recruitment, so thank you very much, Amy, for all of your great work. And she does so many other additional H.R. responsibilities, too. We are really, really blessed to work with such talented staff, so it's an honor to support you.
Thank you.
We'd be remiss without acknowledging you as well, Sarah. So thank you for all you do to serve our employees and make Fitchburg a great place to work as well. So we're very fortunate to have you and Amy both, so thank you much.
Agreed. All right.
Thank you.
That's the proclamations. I do not have anyone else listed for non-agenda items. I do wanna also, though, just appreciate Dr. Clardy, the superintendent, for being here today. Thank you for stopping by. All right, moving to the consent agenda. Is there a motion for the consent agenda? Moved by Dave.
Second.
Sent by Gabriella. And things that people want to remove and do separately on the consent agenda?
I have a question.
Julia, yeah?
I have a question.
Sure.
Can we send ordinance, item eight, the ordinance, to the Healthy Neighborhood Initiative, even though it's an ad hoc committee? What is the protocol?
Yeah, we could do that.
You can do that?
Let's pull that one, yeah, we can pull it out.
Yeah, okay, okay, I was insured, okay.
I'll pull it out. Anything else that someone wants to do separately? Seeing none. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, except for number eight, say aye.
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 And oppose name. All right, that is approved. And then it looks like, Julia, do you want to do a motion to also send it to the Healthy Neighborhoods Committee?
Yes.
All right, so moved, it sounds like?
Second.
Sent by Jay.
Okay.
All right. All in favor of approving number eight by also sending it to the Healthy Neighborhoods Committee, say aye.
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 And oppose name? All right, so that is also approved, the administrative report, Chad.
Good evening, everyone. I've got a few items for you of note. Road construction projects. Fish hatchery road is currently on schedule, and according to Bill Balky, anticipating some pavement work happening in the next couple of weeks or so. Sign Road currently is experiencing some delays in its progress, so they're evaluating to what extent the work of the project can be done and wrapped up during this construction year to minimize impact on the neighborhood. The library has resumed regular operating hours as of last week. They are still offering curbside pickup services. And they also have recently changed out the walking Storybrooke, Story Book at McKee Farms Park. That has been changed to the book, The Magical Yet. The Senior Center, it is National Senior Center Month, which our senior center Jill has indicated she believes is actually every month of the year, just as a FYI from her perspective. They have the chocolate shop ice cream coming in, I believe, on September twenty-fourth for, here at City Hall. I don't have the hours on that. And then they also have a restaurant program going on, fundraising program going on this month. You can go to restaurants here in Fitchburg, and I'll name the ones for the next three weeks here. Typically on Wednesdays, tomorrow is Benvenuto's for lunch and dinner from eleven A.M. to nine P.M. And during the entire week of September twentieth through the twenty-fourth, you can visit Funk's Pub between the hours of eleven A.M. and eleven P.M. And then Wednesday, September twenty-ninth, you can visit the Hop House for lunch or dinner between eleven A.M. and ten P.M. And please be sure to mention the Friends of the Fitchburg Senior Center, and then a share of the profits from your food orders at those times will be donated to the Fitchburg Senior Center Friends. And then I also would like to know, I know the council received an email from Joe Mccone about an article that's appearing in the Cap Times. Two of our senior center staff, Amy Jordan and Mandy Miller, had a nice article written on them about their service to the Fitchburg senior community and also about a video series they've been doing the last eight years that shares updates about the senior center. So it's a very nice article in there, so I encourage you to check that out. The pickleball courts at McKee Farms Park, I'm sorry, McGaw Park, are doing a grand opening September twenty-first. There will be a demo of pickleball at approximately five thirty P.M. with the ribbon cutting at six P.M. The stormwater utility bills are going out later this month. And just as a reminder, there was a rate increase that will be reflective as of July first, so residents will be receiving their first bills with the rate increase that was approved by council. And then the final item I have, two final items. Revaluation is going to be taking place by the assessing department. The first letters have gone out to residents late last week requesting appointments for that revaluation, which will take place beginning now through the early part of two thousand and twenty-two. New this year is an online scheduling option, so residents can see where the link is in that letter where they can set up an appointment with the assessing department online. And there even is a virtual option this year for folks that may not feel comfortable having assessing staff come into their home due to the current pandemic situation. And then the last item is, I shared an email with council, I believe, yesterday in regards to the Town of Madison Public Information Meeting that is being led and hosted by the city of Madison. That is happening tomorrow evening, September fifteenth at six P.M. It is a virtual meeting primarily. They do have an in-person option, I believe, on Belt Street. But in case you're interested, you can go ahead and register in advance for that meeting. Again, that is primarily a city of Madison focus, although Fitchburg was extended an opportunity to participate. Lisa McNabala has been our staff person working with the city on this particular public information meeting and will be representing the city at the meeting. Thank you.
All right, any quick questions, Julia?
Yes, can you explain the reevaluation from, so what does it mean? It's gonna be, is a percentage of the resident are gonna be reevaluated, or it's kind of like everyone?
I will confirm with Amy, but I believe it's everyone. We did a maintenance year in two thousand and twenty-one, so the intent would be is to do a full revaluation for all properties during the next upcoming calendar year. But I will confirm that with Amy.
Okay, so you said you mentioned that some letter, they are, they are planning to send the letter, or they already sent the letter?
The letter went out last week to residents. About two hundred residents got it initially, so it'll be done in kind of phases.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yep. You bet.
All right, seeing nothing else.
Another, sorry. Can we have a copy of the letter? Because in case some of our residents in our district and they call us with this, so we are aware of what the letter says.
Sure, yep, I'll send that to you.
Thank you.
You bet.
All right, moving along. Plan Commission, no items this week. Anything or any additional?
No, no additional items. We do meet next Tuesday, twenty-first, though.
I think there's a number of things that we just sent on the consent agenda that will be coming back to us. Public Works, Dave.
I move postponement of resolution R one fifty-nine dash twenty-one until the following council meeting. It's not ready for, not ready for approval yet.
Second.
Sent by Gabriella. And any comments at all? Looks like hopefully in a couple of weeks we'll be ready. All right, all in favor of postponing, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose name? All right, next one.
I move postpone, post, move to postpone resolution R one sixty dash twenty-one approving the agreement for subdivision improvements in the USONA certified survey map.
Second.
Sent by Gabriella, kind of the same thing.
Basically, yeah, he's not, he's not ready. They, they think in two weeks they should have all the punch items taken care of.
All right, all in favor of postponing, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose name? All right, that's postponed. All right, next one.
Next one, I'm not sure. I, I believe we need to postpone resolution R one sixty-three dash twenty-one. I, I don't have a note that says we approved it at Board of Public Works.
I think Chad's saying that actually we, okay, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Yeah, at staff meeting this morning, Public Works indicated that they're ready for approval on that one. So if council is willing, they are, are able to.
Okay, all right. It wasn't on our Board of Public Works agenda, but I'll move approval, resolution R one sixty-three twenty-one approving the agreement for subdivision improvements in the plat of Riversong.
Second.
Sent by Randy, and it sounds like Public Works did not take action, or I guess I didn't.
Was not on our, was not on our agenda.
So this was taken up by Board of Public Works on August sixteenth and approved at that time. So it was postponed at the August council meeting.
Okay.
So it was a while ago that you had done that.
Thank you, Chad.
And do you remember enough to speak to it? Do you want Chad to speak to it?
I do not, I'm hoping Bill is here.
Or, yeah, Bill's not online, it looks like, but.
So this is for subdivision improvements in the plat of Riversong. Land division ordinance requires a subdivider to enter into a contract with the city for installation of public improvements in a plat. Use the standard agreement for this contract that has been reviewed by the city attorney. The agreement is modified for specific circumstances in each plat, and the resolution approves this agreement, subject to the final review by the city attorney and city engineer, which they both are approving of. So Riversong is the development in Terabesa in regards to the thing, believe that's the senior housing project that's been proposed for there.
Assisted senior living, it's pretty standard. It looks like we do this for all of our projects and nothing out of the ordinary for this one. Any questions at all? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose name? All right, as approved, anything else, Dave?
Nope.
All right, moving along, Park Commission.
Yes, so we met on September second, and then, okay, one second. One of the actual, action item that we discussed was the Stoner Prairie Park planning discussion. So it was decided that maybe the city can eventually, or there is a proposition that maybe the city can hire a consultant to help with the planning and design of the park. This is a. Oh, this is, this is an area park. So it's, so it's almost eleven acres. So I think we need to have a robust design, so the city is considered to use some of the park improvement dollars to cover the cost of the planning process, so. So that one was, so we are moving forward with that. The, the other thing is we took action on resolution R dash one forty-eight dash twenty-one. There is a resolution to approve a contract for servicing with the Norfolk Hatchery Road, Road for the half phase number, number one. So it was approved a park, and it's coming to commission, to other commissions. So it's gonna come to council maybe, I don't know, at the, at the end of September meeting, maybe? I don't remember, yeah. Then we talk about, as you know, we are in the process to revise and update the park and open space plan. So, and we want to invite all of you for the first meeting. It's gonna be Thursday, September thirty, is the public open house. This meeting will be held at City Hall in the council chamber, starting with opening the doors at six thirty. It's gonna be like an, an open house, and then at six thirty, and the presentation will start at seven o'clock. So Wade Thompson is gonna be leading this presentation. So this is like a, we are asking for community input. So I would like to invite all the elders here to participate because we have, you know, we have plenty of parks in each district. So, so everyone is welcome. And then we talk about the update in the inclusive playground site. What is, and then we talk about a staff report. We have a report every meeting about the director report, recreation, forestry, and park. There is a lot of activity happening, but the main announcement is the open space plan update meeting, so that's it.
All right, thank you. Moving along to library board.
Well, the administrator already pointed out that we are now open our regular hours, so yay. And other than that, I have nothing else to report, except that the library board's having a meeting tomorrow night, tomorrow evening, at five thirty.
Excellent, thank you. Commission on aging model, Dave.
We met last Thursday, just a few highlights. We have a, we updated our mission statement, revision statement. We were working on that, we had a few minor changes, but that is updated. I think you might have recall, we have a pilot project with Dane County for meals up at Hy-Vee, and it's causing some, I don't wanna say problems, but participation things due to some people driving. And so Joel would like to talk to the county about maybe some adjustment on, on that, on the pilot. Then the last thing with the Town of Madison absorption, Joel is, Joel will be requesting a half, a half or a part-time, half-position social worker for that. And she has some ideas how the other half could be used, but I'm, I'm not really at liberty to, to discuss that. That's all I have.
All right, and also you maybe saw in the newspaper, Wisconsin State Journal, a nice article with a couple of the senior center employees talking about what they're doing for the city. So it was a very nice article as well, so hopefully you had a chance to see that. Let's see, Resource Conservation Commission.
We meet tomorrow night at six thirty P.M.
All right, how about TTC?
Yes, so we could start with resolutions, and I do have several updates after that. So I move approval of resolution R ninety-three twenty-one, approving revision one to the Dane County Cost Share Agreement to fund the CTHMM and Lacy Traffic Signal. Cost Share Agreement to fund the CTHMM and Lacy Traffic Signals and Inspection, I'm sorry, and Intersection Improvements.
Second.
Signed by Jay, did TTC approve?
Yes.
Did Public Works approve?
Yes.
Did Finance approve?
Yes.
All right. Do you wanna explain this one, Gabriella?
Yeah, so this is an update to the cost share agreement we've had with the county. There was a misunderstanding about what we signed, and our cost share is actually bigger than we had originally budgeted for. So the increased cost is $59,055. Those funds will be, will be transferred from the McKee Road project, from unspent funds for that project. I did make a request in Finance Committee just to get an answer about, you know, what happened and how we can avoid some of these kinds of types of misunderstandings about contracts in the future. And Misty will provide an answer, or I'm sorry, our Public Works Director will provide an answer for that. So we can send it out to council so that we can kind of clarify what the, what the procedure is going forward to avoid these types of misunderstandings.
All right. And I know that because there's a budget amendment, we do need a two-thirds vote for this to pass. Dave?
I just wanted to add, you know, we were taking the funds from McKee Road, but they are from the contingency from McKee Road. I just add, add that, and Board of Public Works shared the same comment, you know, how it happened. It happened. What can we do to avoid it in the future? And so that's, that's where our focus is now.
Other questions at all? All right. Seeing none, and I know that Shannon got disconnected. She's trying to sign back in, so hopefully she signs back in very soon here. All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, that passes even without Shannon abstaining, I guess, if you will. All right, next one.
I move approval of Resolution R 14421, authorizing acceptance of the fabrication and installation of exterior wayfinding signage, signage project bid.
Second. Second.
Signed by, I heard Randy there first. Did TTC approve?
Yes.
Did Public Works approve?
Yes.
Did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
Did Cedar approve? All right, everyone approves, so.
Yeah, so basically, this is a project that was originally in the CIP for 2019, but had been pushed just due to staffing shortages, couldn't dedicate time to the project. And then we actually, if you recall, we rejected the bids and rebid the project recently. But this is the, we've chosen a vendor to produce the signs. These are wayfinding signs to direct people to different amenities in the city that are branded as City of Fitchburg. And they actually lay out in the, if anyone had a chance to look at the bid document, it lays out exactly what the signs look like and what amenities and locations in Fitchburg are being highlighted. A side note, I did ask in, in Finance, because the postal station at Hatchery Hill was included in the original layout for wayfinding signage, so just trying to make sure that that's flagged for staff in case we wanna make a change order and update that due to the, that being closed.
Any questions at all? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, that's approved. What else?
So the West Lacy Road project, the 60% plan is, is close to being done, and we will likely review that in October. So that is forthcoming for people that are interested in that project from Lacy to Fitchroona, or sorry, from Seminole to Fitchroona, the reconstruction of Lacy. You should keep an eye out for October for the referral. Oh, one thing, I did wanna share my screen real quick, if that's okay.
Sure.
So what I'm sharing right now is data that our Transportation Engineer, Andrew McFadden, provided to the Transportation and Transit Committee. It's a series of intersections that have had issues. There have been, this actually includes on this, this side of the screen, actual crashes over the last five years between bikes and our pedestrians and our cars. So these are basically considered problematic intersections, and he's collected some data about what types of volume are happening over time. And I'm sharing this with the council specifically because if there are other intersections you'd like to flag, he's gonna be including these on potential planning for how we can mitigate and work on these intersections and improve the safety. So I can send out this PDF to everybody. There is also a nice little Google Doc, or sorry, not Google Doc, Google Maps with, with labeled intersections so that you can pinpoint exactly where they are. And if anyone in the public is interested in this list, obviously you can see it here, but if anyone wants a copy of it, this is public information, so I can send it to you as well. Unless there's any sort of comments from the, from the council right now about other intersections that Andrew can look at, we can certainly share that with him based on.
We need to be careful about discussions, though. This isn't an agenda item.
Oh, all right.
And I just, I just, just a word of warning that we can't discuss it, but...
Correct. That's right.
Okay, so I'll send out an email, and I'll copy Andrew on it, and if you want to reply, let him know if there's anything you wanna add to that list. Next thing is, we had a long conversation in TTC last week about Madison Metro, and Madison Metro staff actually came and presented several different, a couple of different presentations about decisions that are forthcoming. I did kinda wanna give you just a preview of what those discussions are gonna look like. There's a couple, well, I guess, but there's basically four decisions that had to be made in the near future by the council. And by near future, I mean December of this year through probably mid, middle of next year. The first decision will be whether we wanna apply for state transportation funding ourselves rather than what we do right now, which is we get a share of the, of the state transportation funding that is given to Madison. We do that kind of to streamline staff time, but it actually looks like we may save money if we apply for it ourselves, but we do have to take on extra staff time to, to do that. But anyway, so that decision's first because the staff has a hard deadline for applying by December 15th. So that's, decision's gonna be coming up very shortly. The next decision is resigning the partner contract with Madison Metro, and Madison Metro received a significant amount of, of funding, you know, pandemic funding, basically. And the good thing about that is there were increasing costs due to infrastructure updates, but the impact of those rising costs is kind of softened by this federal funding that's come in. But Madison Metro has decided to kind of create this escrow account model where we basically pay into an account, every partner gets a share of that federal funding, and then we pay our expenses out of that account. So we're basically getting the funding through that way. The whole model is explained in a presentation. The details are still being ironed out, but that presentation at TTC is a good place to start in terms of understanding what it looks like. And then I'm hoping that we can have a conversation at committee of the whole in the near future and get your feedback about what, what the pain points are, what, what you like, what you don't like about, so that the staff has time to talk with Madison Metro before we have the partner contract actually in front of us to vote on, which would probably be early 2022. The third decision is the network, the network study. So Madison Metro has been undergoing a process to study the network and potentially really redo what it looks like. They wanted to look at, what if we just completely scrap this? How do we make this a better system? And so they have several different options that we can look like, and it obviously extends into Fitchburg as well. So we have decisions about how we want our network to look, whether we wanna prioritize ridership or coverage. And that means, do we have more buses on the same routes so that they come more often? Or do we have more routes that come less frequently so more people have access to buses? And they actually have specific models that show what it looks like in the City of Fitchburg, impacts about which citizens, how many citizens would be impacted by this. So those are all information that we'll need to take a look at as a council and decide what we wanna do. That will probably be early in 2022. And then the last thing, oh, I guess as a side note on that, the bus rapid transit is, there is a plan to have a bus rapid transit line that goes down Fish Hatchery Road. Whether or not that extends into Fitchburg is up to us, whether or not we want it. It's their green line, and so we could probably extend it all the way down to McKee Road. That's not gonna happen until 2024, but I think it's something that's worth discussing amongst council now, so we get a sense of what people want and maybe hear from the public on that front as well. And then the last thing is evaluating if we want any other transit options within the City of Fitchburg, if we wanted to do microtransit to move people around the city. We may have ability to do that with that, if we wanna do the direct state funding instead of going through Madison Metro, we may have $50,000 to $100,000 to work with if we wanted to do that, or if we wanted to expand metro options. So anyway, lots to discuss about Madison Metro, and I will send out a link to that discussion in case you have a chance to watch it. And then I've talked with Aldo Udell about potentially getting on the COW schedule in the near future. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Yeah, quick question, yeah?
So when is the traffic surveys gonna be done? Do you have any idea?
That's a good question. I do not know.
Okay.
All right. Moving along, Cedar?
Okay, so we met like three weeks ago? I don't remember the date, but we, it was a joint meeting with Housing Committee and Cedar. So what we discussed, that was the workforce housing endowment program feasibility study done by H and A Advisors. We have, practically, we have an idea how this feasibility study look like. So, so the purpose of the joint meeting was to share the final result of the feasibility study, answer any question related to the study, discuss and gather feedback and direction on the outstanding policy question. So some of the, some of the conclusions are that the cost model was based on current and projected future cost. Also, the concept is feasible for income levels at 80% to the Dane County median family income, that is around $74,000, and then with a grant of $200,000 per unit. So there was, there was a lot of discussion about the finding, financing of this housing feasibility study. The council will know more about this because as you see in the package for today, there was, in the consent agenda, there was Resolution R dash 175-21. There is, it's going through Commission, Plan Commission, Cedar, Finance for review about, about, to determine if the city want to move forward with this feasibility study or not. The other thing that we discussed, I was concerned, and also the Chair of the Housing Committee, Ms. Perry, we questioned why a land trust was not considered in the model. So the lack of consideration was that, based, according to the conversation with the local lenders and builder, they determined that they don't, you know, to have a land trust was not, was not considered in the study. But after a couple of discussions in the committee, it was determined that we should have an, an study about how land trusts can be used and can be another layer of underwriting for this project. So, so we are considered to, I think, we are looking to see how we can incorporate that option in the feasibility study. It's not gonna be the one, it's not gonna be incorporated in the resolution that is moving forward, but maybe something that we need to do next year. So we have spent most of our two hours discussing this feasibility project. You will see all the details coming in Commission, and then we're gonna discuss it in the next council meeting. So pay attention, it's a very important, I would say, project initiative for the city regarding workforce housing. So it's a pilot program, so, you know, when you go and review this, think about this is a pilot program. So bring all your question, and I think this is something, you know, that is important for the city, is part of the housing plan that we put together. But there are a lot of things that we need to, to work on that, you know? But this is what I encourage all of your fellow elders to, take a look at this, bring your ideas, comments, okay? So that's it.
All right, thank you. Edgar, Neural Affairs, Jenny?
No, we have not met since we've met as a, as a council. Next meeting is next Tuesday, the 21st at 4:00 PM.
All right. EMS, Shannon?
We meet to Thursday. So we haven't met yet this month.
All right. Bike Committee, Joe is not here, so I'm gonna just pass on that one for now. They did have a bike rodeo, bike rodeo, actually last weekend at the New Fountains apartment. I stopped by for a little while, and there's some people there that were going on the course and getting their bikes checked out and things like that. So it was a nice organized event. Tree Advisory Committee?
We meet again in October.
All right. Landmark Preservation, Shannon?
I got nothing for you. We haven't met.
All right. Housing Advisory, and that's Joe, and I think we heard, actually from that, from Cedar, the head of joint meeting with Cedar. Healthy Neighborhoods, Jay?
We haven't had a meeting in a long time, but apparently we're going to have one now since something just got referred to us.
All right. All right. Finance Committee?
Yes, the Finance Committee met earlier today, and we reviewed the detailed review of all checks issued, checks 122488 through 122526 for the period of August 16th through the 31st, 2021, totaling $1,843,070.71. We also reviewed the detail of all ACH payments for the period of August 1st through the 31st, 2021, totaling $571,073.85. And we reviewed the P-card transactions for the cycle ending August 6, 2021, for a total Then, should I move on to the resolution?
Sounds good.
All right. Motion to approve Resolution R dash 166-21, recommending an audit firm for the city's 2021 through 2023 financial audits.
Second.
Signed by Gabriella, and what's this about?
Well, Misty is on, and if, I'd like to defer to Misty to speak to this item if, if possible.
Go ahead, Misty.
So the 2020 audit, which was done in 2021, was the fifth year of our five-year contract. And so normally, we would go out to bid, you know, make sure that the prices are good. But I'm bringing forward a three-year extension without going out to bid for your consideration. It's with Baker Tilly, who we've had for a long time, was very happy with their services. The increase that they proposed is reasonable, 3% to 4%, with a bit of a nuance for a new gas fee rule we have coming on. But the bigger reason why I was considering this for, as a recommendation for you guys is that when 2022 comes and we absorb the City of Madison, Baker Tilly is also the auditors for the Town of Madison and the City of Madison, and there's a lot of benefit of them being the auditors for all of us to make sure that the reporting is done consistently and accurately. It will streamline that process. And then I included 2023 as well, because we have TID 4 and TID 6 that are both hoping to get closed in the next couple of years. Baker Tilly has been our auditors for the entire life of the TID, so that will streamline that final audit as well if they wrap up those two projects. And the intention would be to go out to bid after this three-year extension is complete.
All right. Any questions at all? Dave? And then Julia?
Misty, will this include any review of process and procedures? You know, I think we're aware of what happened with our former administrator and things missing, and will this involve, whether it's the safe or keys being when employees leave? I, you know, we're, we're not a little city anymore, and, you know, none of us wanna go through what we're going through now. Will this involve any of those safeguards or looking at those things?
It does not. So this is the traditional external audit, financial audit that we're required to do. We have used Baker Tilly for internal control audits for more of the cash handling piece in a couple of different departments, and that's something that hopefully we can incorporate in the budget in the future. But the, the more operational procedures, things, that's, that's not something that would be traditionally done by them, though I'm sure we could hire them to do a more thorough review.
Maybe we could put that on our city administrators' plate to ponder a little bit. Okay? Thank you.
Julie, do you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question and a comment. So Misty, if we approve this, then for the 2023 year, you know, are we including the fee also? Oh, no, because we are gonna be one city, but they are not gonna increase the fee for that year because we are gonna have the Town of Madison, you know, section?
Correct. So in, they have quoted us the price for 2022, which would be when we take over as well as 23, so that would be included. And just, I guess, in theory, the audit work that they're required to do won't be all that much different because we're still the same entity that controls that stuff, just a different, different nuance that we'll have to work. because we're still the same entity that controls that stuff, just a different, different nuance that we'll have to work through.
Okay. So my other comment is, I usually, you know, it's, it's usually a good idea to change your auditor every couple of year because you have a, you know, a new set of eyes looking at your books and your, you know, and your financial. It's, it's a recommendation, but then I, I will approve this because the town of Madison is using the same C P F firm to do the audit and it's gonna be, make sense that they are, you know, we are gonna have access to the books, you know, and to all the internal information. So, but, you know, I think in the future we need to, I know that Baker Tilly does an excellent job as a C P F firm in this type of, in the, in this type of industry and audit, but also we need to maybe look in the future, you know, to change auditor firms, you know, to bring another perspective. That's it, my comment.
Anyone else? Jay, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question. So a thousand years ago, we used Virchow and then it went to Virchow Kraus and then we switched to Baker and then Baker became Baker Tilly and now it's Baker Tilly Virchow Kraus. So I guess the question I have is even if we were to send this out to bid, are there any other companies out there that would be, that would bid on this? It seems like there's a big consolidation in this industry and I, I don't even know if there's anybody else out there who would bid on it.
Misty, do you wanna come into that?
Absolutely. So I think last time we went out to bid, I wanna say we got seven to nine responses. I don't remember if all of them were qualified responses or not, but there's definitely other firms out there that specialize in governmental accounting and our audit would be attractive to all of them. So when we go out to bid again, it ultimately will come down to, to low price for a, a firm that's reputable. And then Baker Tilly, Virchow Kraus, that whole kind of transition, it's always the same company. They just got bought out by a parent company and all of that. And if I may too, to speak to Julia's comments about the changing auditors, completely agree with what she's saying. The only caveat I would make is that we did change our partner a couple of years ago. So we have a different partner in place, which helps mitigate some of the concerns that she's talking about, but clearly not the full audit switch.
All right, anything else? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay. All right, that is approved. Anything else for Finance?
No, nothing else, thank you.
Could I add something? I'm sorry. Would that be all right, Randy?
Sure.
Oh, no, go ahead. The mayor approves.
The, Misty did talk about the ARPA funding a little bit at Finance. The ARPA funding means the American Rescue Plan Act, the federal money that's coming to the city. I believe it's about three point two million. And Misty, I think, was expecting us to have guidance by last month, but we did not have the guidance yet and we probably won't have it till early next year. All that is to say that we're not gonna decide to spend the money until we know how precisely we're allowed to spend it. But I do believe we have accepted the money and have at least part of it in our coffers. And I also asked, and the plan is to include some sort of public input, whether that's a hearing, a listening session, that's to be determined. But it looks like we won't actually be taking any action on that till early twenty-twenty-two. Is there anything else that I'm missing, Misty, on that?
That was a great summary, thank you.
All right, moving on, Personnel?
So we met on September eighth. We didn't have any action item, but we have, but we have a good meeting. We discussed the personnel, the H R report, and we did a lot of brainstorming about a couple of issues. We have an update on the police chief recruitment, that is, maybe we are gonna have, you know, a final decision the September of, the week of September twenty-seven. So, and also, we have a, Sarah did a great job with the Personnel Committee, H R Department update. She has a report, if you have the chance to look at that, it's this minute in the Personnel Committee meeting. That, so we discussed about this report and she mentioned what are the current recruitments in progress. So we know that the police chiefs, we have an opening. We also have an opening, the residential property appraiser, that deposition closed last week, this week, September twelfth. And then she has also a report with all the turnover since May twenty-one and she explained why people moved to other places or other municipality or changed job. And then there was a couple of initiatives that H R is working this year and one is they just implemented the three sixty-degree feedback and the program is going very well according to Sarah. Also, the city has another, the, a safety team that it meets quarterly. The city is also working, they have a diversity and inclusion employee resource group that they are going through the handbook and have some, they have suggested, suggested some modification and they are gonna come to our next Personnel Committee meeting to, to share those modifications. And then H R continues to work with I T to work toward paperless personnel files. So they are trying to have all the, the personnel file paperless. We also talk about the trends in H R and also the future project that, that H R is working. They are evaluating the trends, trends in H R. They are also doing a research and cost benefit analysis of pay, parental leave. They also future project involved to have a city mentorship program, that we don't have that in place yet. Also, performance evaluation system, she want to do a refresher training for all the managers. Also, they're looking at the creation of the donated vacation policy, they want to be sure that they can do it. You know, they need to check, check with them. Valerie. And also, she is planning to work in a city succession plan. Why? Because she showed a workforce statistic about the generation breakdown in the city. And we have around thirty-five employees that they are baby boomers, so it means that they are, you know, they can retire soon. Then Generation X, they are around ninety-four employees. Millennials is a bigger group with one, one hundred and six employees. And then Generation X is, they have thirty-eight employees. So that one is, and then she has another graph with gender and ethnicity. So the city, the current staff of the city is two hundred and seventy-three employee. Two hundred and thirty-eight are white, thirteen Hispanics, two or more raised, seven unknown, five, they are black, seven, and Asian, three. So, and then sixty-three percent are male and thirty-six percent are female. So it was an, we discussed this, we also discussed the future of how to recruit people now that we can work remotely. So, so it was a great meeting and I, you know, if you want to know more about all the, you know, the project that they are doing in the H R department, go to the minutes from the Personnel Committee meeting and she puts together a very nice report. So, I don't know, Gabriella, did I miss something else? Because you take note for everything, so. I think we did that, yeah, yeah. Okay, that's it.
Thank you. Public Safety, Dave?
Today we reviewed the operator's license. We had five, three, three new and two renewals. We have two events going on. One, the Puppy Up, which is a, a walk for raising money for research canine, canine cancer. I think most, any of us that have had dogs most of our lives probably have been, had a dog that, that developed that, it's pretty common. So it's a great, great event, October third, McKee Farms Park. And another one I'm particularly excited about being German and it's Oktoberfest. The Hop House is having a, a Beer Run event on October, October sixteenth. And I wanted to thank Alder Allen for offering. We've had, had some complaints about noise, one from Hop House and Alder, Alden. Alder Allen offered some good guidance and offered to borrow some equipment to, to the event to measure, to measure the sound, so thank you for that. We are cognizant with the events, we, we've had some complaints this year, but I will add this, the Beer Run, it's the first annual and, and great tradition starts somewhere. And we've had a lot of first events this year and I think it bodes well for our city. Hopefully these keep, these keep growing and, you know, develop great traditions for our city. That's all I had.
All right, a number of things that I have. One, last weekend was very busy, lots of things happening in the city. I mentioned the bike rodeo over at the New Fountains Apartments. There was also a nine eleven remembrance that Chief Paul Vermaeker led, but did have participation from both Police Department and EMS Department. Chapel Valley Church had a official grand opening of the new church that they bought. It's unfortunately in Madison, just over the border though, and a beautiful facility for them. They will continue to do lots of things in Fitchburg thankfully, but happy that they did find a home after many, many years of searching. And then also Kids Building Wisconsin was this past weekend at McKee Park and Try North is the main driver of that. And that was, they had over five thousand people attend that, so that was highly successful as well. And then for those of you who bike, September twenty-fourth is the annual Pick Me Up at the Border Bike Ride that Bike Fitchburg does. And so if you have any interest in doing that, make sure you have lights for your bike because it is at night and you go as far as you want, you don't have to go all the way down to the border. And even though it says Pick Me Up at the Border, they don't actually pick you up at the border. You have to turn around and bike all the way back. It's a little bit of misnamed.
Creative advertising.
And then just finally, a little more information on redistricting, we continue to get more information. One is that it sounds like, and I know, you know, we're confirming this, that we actually might be able to, after all, take in consideration the town of Madison. And so we might be able to actually, at least a little bit, adjust for that because, and knowing that we're gonna get, I think it's fifteen hundred to two thousand people there, so that's fantastic news. It looks like we are really gonna have October to do this. We're gonna have with the ad hoc committee, they're gonna meet in early October, just kind of a, kind of a kickoff and get some basic information. And then we're gonna get our information from the county in mid-October. And then the Idaho Committee is gonna have really only two, two and a half weeks to come up with the maps. And it sounds like right from the county, we're actually gonna have the city split in two already. And so they have to take those two districts and essentially split those in two to get the four districts. So I don't know that there's actually, my guess is that when you're trying to keep neighborhoods together and do those type of things, it's, there's probably one or two options that make sense anyway as you're doing that final split. I think the main thing they're gonna be doing, it really is looking at point locations. I think that's probably the big thing they're gonna look at and who, who votes at which location. I think that's a big thing as part of that. So anyway, that's happening, but we are going to need to do, and I mentioned this last time, a special council meeting. I believe it's November second is the first Tuesday in November so that we can vote on the official map. That, the end of that week, we have to be done either way. And I figure Tuesday is our council of night meetings, we can do it that night. If for some reason something goes wrong or people hate the options, we can't come up with a solution, we could meet again later that week. I hope we don't, but we'll just put that on your radar, that be the only thing on the agenda. And it's, it's, the thing that's most unfortunate is even in a normal year, a normal census, I guess, we only have two months to do this, this is really even less than a month. And it's extremely difficult to get the public participation that you would want in something like this. So that's where it's kind of the most frustrating for me, I guess, in this whole process is that we can't delay it because if we delay it, then I think they go on without us and they might even do it for us. You know, we can't go beyond what that timeline is, which is really unfortunate. But earlier today, I did finally get confirmation from the last members of the ad hoc committee, so I can actually share that and I can email this out tomorrow. Representing District One, Susie Jenin is going to be the representative. And I mentioned Chapel Valley Church, actually she is one of the co-pastors of that, but she lives in District One and obviously is very familiar with District One, does a lot of events throughout the city, but especially in District One and lives there as well. In District Two, Greg Jones is going to represent District Two. And District Three, Wendy Hathaway is going to be the representative there. In District Four, Huma Hassan is going to be our representative in District Four. And then in Rural Fitchburg, I said, you know, I want to have someone to represent Rural Fitchburg. Because of the delays, we, some people couldn't actually participate on the redistricting committee that wanted to. And we only had one person that had submitted for Rural and Ed Kenny can't. So I was doing some recruiting and Bill Konzimius is going to be the representative in Rural Fitchburg. He lives on Adams Road and so he's gonna be a representative there. And then kind of the last kind of at-large spot, Gene Musser is gonna be the representative for that sixth spot. And then, you know, I'd earlier asked Randy to chair that and I didn't want to just kind of go back on that, so Randy is gonna chair that for me as well. So that's where we're at and I think, you know, Tracy, we should probably put this as a agenda item for the next few meetings, at least through November anyway, because I'm sure more and more information is gonna come forward and so we want to make sure that we at least share what information we have. And it's not as much as I would like, but we can share more information there, so that is what I have.
Can I, can I make a recommendation?
Sure.
I don't think that, you know, for the alder, you know, you choose Randy, nothing against you, Randy, but you're running, I don't know, you're gonna run for reelection next year or your term is up. I think it should be someone who is not running for reelection or, or remove the alder from this, this, this group because we are, we're gonna be drawing our maps for our district, so we should be total independent because the perception is, could be that the person that maybe could be running for reelection next year is drawing the map from his district. So I think we need to remove the politic element or maybe you should be in charge of the, the, because you are not running and you're gonna be for two more year or put another person, staff, you know, but I think we need to remove the politics from the elected official, I would say, for, from this committee. So this is my, my concern.
All right, thank you. All right, going on to all the reports and since it's the first meeting in a month, we'd start with District One. Joe's not here, but Dave, do you have any?
Just a couple of things, you know, you mentioned, we had the, the bike rodeo, we handed out quite a few flyers. We'd like a little better attendance, but it was still pretty good. We've been, I've been recruiting community leaders, you know, Lower King James Way, as most of you know, is kind of a priority for me and I've identified four to five people, you know, that is gonna be the start of our core kind of community leaders down there. And I'll just close, our community garden this year, some statistics, I'll, I'll send a, send an update to all the council members. But we had eleven plots, we had roughly twenty gardeners, thirty different plant species growing there. And we listed some goals and we'd like to double the size of it next year. So it's been a, been a success, not without challenges, but it's, it's been fun and, and the community has, has embraced that. I, I've kind of picked out a bunch of other places that I'd like to try it in the, in the district if I can. So this is something I kind of have passion about and I, I think we, it's, it's good for the city, it's good for our residents and I'd like to keep it moving. That's all, thank you.
Julia?
I want to invite everyone, there are two events coming to District Two. This coming Friday, we have a ribbon cutting for the dedicated family care, it's gonna be at twelve o'clock. It's in twenty-eight, eighty-seven Yarmouth Greenway Drive. So the Fitchburg, the Chamber Fitchburg is putting together this with, with SIDA. So it's at twelve o'clock, it's half an hour, it's a ribbon cutting. And then also the Fitchburg Chamber is doing another event in District Two. It's gonna be a Ben Ben Nuto, September twenty-third from four to six o'clock. It's a networking event, so that's it.
Thank you. Gabriella?
Um, one thing, well, I guess two things. Um, first thing is lots fifty-three and fifty-four, which are those lots that are adjacent to McKee Farms Park on Wilshire and Chapel Valley. Uh, the first vote for that is coming up at the Plan Commission meeting on September twenty-first. And let me just double-check the time on that because I'm not, sorry. The Plan Commission meets at six thirty PM on September twenty-first for that very first vote. It is, um, rezone, sorry, rezone request RZ dash two three nine nine dash, dash twenty-one. So people that are interested in that project, want to learn more about it, there's a lot more information in the packet. The developer's done a lot more work, has answered a lot of questions. So, um, it'll be very interesting to you if you're following the project. If you have a hard time finding it, just send me an email and I'm happy to send it out to you. It's also in the Plan Commission Agenda Packet. And it's also in the Agenda Packet today, because it was on the consent agenda for the, uh, the, our council meeting here today. So please check that out and let me know if you have any questions, um, or, or let Alder Retifada know. And then second thing is just to reiterate, because I think it's important for people to know, the plan for the Police and Fire Commission is to vote on the final candidate on September twenty-seventh. So there's September twenty-seventh meeting, although they are meeting tomorrow for a regular scheduled meeting. They're not going to be taking up the business for that, but they are planning to vote for that final vote on September twenty-seventh. So if you're interested in submitting feedback, um, you have, I guess, a little over a week to do so. And, um, you're welcome to come speak at the meeting or submit written feedback, whatever you prefer. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Jay?
Uh, there's not a lot to report, although we had a few, um, I, I've been receiving scattered reports over the last few weeks about construction noise, uh, up north of, uh, or south of Quarry Hill from, uh, I, they've been, I guess they've been pounding the earth quite a lot. Um, so we did have a, uh, there was a neighborhood initiated virtual meeting with, um, the leadership from, uh, uh, Promega last week, and it sounds like a lot of those issues got resolved. So I'm hoping that that, uh, continues to be the case, and I haven't heard any more complaints. So yay.
All right. Thank you. Shannon?
I have nothing to report.
All right. Jim?
Nothing to report.
All right. Randy?
Uh, just one clarification. I know, I was going to mention the, uh, um, uh, month of, of September as well. And as Administrator Brecklin, you mentioned, uh, the restaurants and so forth, all very worthwhile causes. Did you mention the, uh, the, the, the ice cream with, uh, the Senior Center as well on the twenty-fourth?
I did, but if you happen to have the times, I did not have the times available.
I have the time as from noon to two. And it's the Chocolate Shop, twelve, twelve selections of ice cream. So that's what I understand.
Do you have the twelve selections available?
I do not. No, no, no. But I'm sure we'll find something on it.
I, I'm sure we will. I just need to know if I could narrow it down already.
No. But, uh, a constituent had reached out, and I just wanted to make certain that that was covered. So very worthwhile, um, program. Thank you. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Uh, there's no unfinished business. We do have, uh, one new business item. And it's, uh, action on a claim from Edgerdine Contractors Incorporated. Valerie, do you want to speak to this before we go into closed session?
Absolutely. This is, uh, just as a brief preview. This is a claim filed by the driver of a vehicle that was involved in an accident that also involved one of, uh, Fitchburg Police Squad cars. So, um, I, I guess I would ask the council to, uh, for somebody to make a motion to go into closed session so I can give you a little bit more background on that.
All right. Just along through the motion?
So move.
Uh, you gotta read the whole thing. Sorry.
I can, I can do it. Uh, I'll, I make, I move to go on to closed session, uh, pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight five one G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved for the insurance claim for Edgerdine Contractors, Inc.
Second.
Sent in by Jay. Perfect. Uh, all in favor of going into closed session? Say aye.
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 And opposed nay. All right. Give us a few minutes. Okay, we are ready. Is there a motion to reconvene in open session?
So move.
So move.
Your second?
Second.
Sent in. Uh, all in favor of reconvene in open session? Say aye.
Aye.
And opposed nay. All right. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I would move that we authorize the city attorney to negotiate a settlement, uh, of this claim per the discussion in closed session.
Sent in by Randy. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed nay. All right. So that is approved. Announcements coming the whole is actually next week. It's actually before the council meeting. It's one of those rare instances. What are we talking about, Randy?
Uh, I have two items on the agenda, special assessment processes and procedures. Uh, Public Works will, will direct that presentation. And then the second, second hour Curry Court Stormwater Study Presentation and Discussion. Claudia Guy will be directing that, uh, informational presentation.
All right. And the next council meeting is in two weeks. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Sent in. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed nay. All right, we are adjourned.